This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's first selectman, joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, are there any public comments to tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for the meeting of July 11th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Item number four, we have two special guests here this evening. And these fine gentlemen here are part of the Regional Water Authority, whom this government has an outstanding relationship with. So Kevin and Tom are here tonight to speak about a new initiative by the RWA, which is an acronym for the Regional Water Authority. Kevin and Tom, we appreciate this partnership we've had here for years, the town of North Haven. You know you've got our support, and I appreciate what you do for us in the streets of North Haven with the communication we get, whether there's a water main breakage, your group and your team is always on top of it, keeping me posted, and the follow-up has always been exceptional. So I want you to know this government appreciates your organization. So Kevin and Tom, I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to you. Right there.
So thank you for having us. As the first selectman said, we're here to talk about this new initiative we have. We met with the first selectman a couple of months ago to review this, and he thought it'd be a great idea for us to come brief the entire board. So that's why we're here. It has to do with some new federal regulations that are going into effect relatively soon, connected to the lead and copper rule. So tonight, I'm going to go over a little bit about the lead and copper rule, and Tom, who is our manager of water quality, is here to back me up, and then talk about one of the major things that we're going to be doing to comply with the lead and copper rule. So lead and copper rule is a series of regulations that obviously governs how water companies handle lead and copper in the water. And through the decades, it's been revised, little tweaks here and there, but on the heels of what happened in Flint, Michigan, you know, now probably almost 10 years ago, the EPA actually did a major revision of the lead and copper rule in 2021, put new testing standards into place, a whole bunch of things. But the one major thing that it did was it now required water companies to create an inventory of water service lines in their service territory. So a water service line is, you know, we have mains in the road that bring water from the treatment plants to the houses, and then we have service lines from the main to the house. The part of the line that goes from the main to the curb is actually the water company's responsibility. And for the most part, we know what those water lines are made of. We put them in, we know what they're made of. Then you have what's called a curb stop, it's a valve, and then on the other side of the curb stop is the water service line into the house. That is the responsibility of the homeowner. The water company does not know a vast majority of what those are made of. We didn't put them in, we don't own them, we're not responsible for them. But the EPA and the 2021 lead and copper rule revisions has put water companies across the country in charge of creating an inventory of what the water service line is made of, both on the water company's side and the customer's side. So the initiative that we're undertaking now is to try and figure out what these water service lines are made of. We're using a number of tactics to do this. So, you know, we're 175 years old, we have a lot of records, so we've had teams for the past few years going through our records to see if we have records of what these things are made of, both on our side and the customer's side. Through routine business, as we're changing meters, as we're fixing things, we're taking note of what those service lines are. We're working with municipal governments and trying to get a handle on what the government-owned buildings, what their service lines are made of. We created a survey that's on our website, so homeowners can self-report what their service line is made of. It's a pretty nifty little tool that will walk a homeowner through the different steps to determine whether you have lead or copper, you know, plastic, brass, whatever it is. And let me take a step back and say, it's the lead and copper rule, but this inventory, we have to identify every single service line, whether it's lead, copper, brass, plastic. We have to have every single service line in our territory in this inventory. The main way that we're doing this, though, is through what we call vacuum excavation. So what we're doing, we have McVac as our contractor and CDM as our engineering contractor. We're going out to select addresses throughout our service territory and doing vacuum excavation. So what that entails is we're locating the curb stop, and then we're digging two small holes, one on each side of the curb stop, down to the surface, so that we can actually look down the hole and see, okay, ours is copper, customers' is copper, and we're putting it in our system. The vacuum excavation is very gentle, it literally is what it says. We take a piece of sod off, put it to the side, and we use a giant vacuum to suck all the dirt out. If the dirt is compacted, we have an air gun that loosens the dirt. There's no heavy machinery in this, other than the vacuum. And then once we set our eyes on the pipe, and we notate what it is, we take a picture, we fill it back in with clean fill, we put the sod back on, and we throw down some grass seed, too, just to make sure we're okay. We try and return it as good or better than how we got there. So the vacuum excavation is what we're going to be beginning in North Haven relatively soon. We have about 400 locations in North Haven on our list. I do have packets that I'll leave behind that have preliminary addresses. This may change by the time we actually roll the trucks into town, but it'll give you an idea of the neighborhoods we're looking at. Our engineering consultant, CDM, is working with a consultant, Trinex, and they actually have machine learning AI that's going to help us in this endeavor. So the machine learning is actually, the computer system is actually what has given us the addresses to go to, based on the age of the home, what we know, what we may not know. It has said, if you dig at these 400 or so houses and tell me what's in the ground, I can then extrapolate and tell you what's in the entire North Haven, based on these 400 addresses. Once the computer does that, then the onus is on the water company to take 10% of those that the computer identified and go verify what the computer has told us. That's down the road, though. In the short term, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be sending out letters to folks in town, letting them know that this activity is going to start happening. For folks who are actually identified as vacuum excavation locations, we're going to leave door hangers at their house three to five days before we actually show up to do the vacuum excavation. There's a phone number on there. Folks don't want us digging at their house, or have an issue, they can call us. It's also important to note that if we show up at a location and there's $10,000 in landscaping, we're not going to dig there. The goal is to do it in the right of way, only to disturb grass. If we absolutely have to, we'll go into the sidewalk, but we will replace the entire slab. Our goal is not to replace $10,000 in landscaping and pavers and all that. That's not, it's not a good use of our ratepayers' money to do that. So assuming the customers are okay with us doing the digging, we'll show up, takes about an hour, maybe two, if the pipe's a little bit deeper. I was at one site where the service line was over eight feet deep, that one took two hours. We close it the same day, and we move on. We leave another door hanger with the homeowner, letting them know what we found. So you'll get a door hanger that says, we were here today, we found copper, no further action is needed. If we find lead, or for that matter, galvanized pipe, which the government considers to be lead, we will leave a door hanger telling them that we found lead, and we will leave a note with them, letting them know what they need to do. So... And in this packet that I'm going to leave behind, all of these communications are in here, so you can see what we're leaving with folks. For the folks who may have letter galvanized, what the letter does tell them is, the main point of the letter is you don't have to worry. The water company has been doing what we call a corrosion control protocol for 40-plus years. We put a corrosion control agent into the water, and it actually coats the pipes, and it stops the water from actually coming into contact with the pipe. So if you do have a lead pipe, the water's never actually touching the lead, and therefore, the lead's not leaching into the water. We've been doing it for 40-plus years, it works. The RWA has always been in compliance with lead and copper rules, with the lead and copper rule limits. For the folks that have lead and galvanized, we will also leave them a test bottle so that they can take samples and submit them to us, and we will test their water just to ensure that their water is safe to drink and free of lead. So that's the protocol if we do come across a letter galvanized pipe. I can tell you, so far, we've done well over 2,000 holes across our service territory. We have found four lead pipes. And we've, about 4% have been galvanized. And the tests that we've done on those pipes that people have given us back, it's been a non-detect for lead, so the corrosion control is working. So our message to anybody who may, you know, we may say you have a letter galvanized pipe, you don't have to worry, we've been protecting you, we will continue to protect you. Long term, the goal is to get all the lead out of the ground. That's in the next phase of lead and copper rule improvements. The water company right now is putting together plans and putting the funding in place to actually be able to replace these lead lines, but until we're able to replace them, we're going to continue doing our corrosion control protocol because it works. So I'll just stop there, because I've been talking a lot. And I'll just, if you have any questions...
Sally and Bill, any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
During this process at the curb stop, the digging and vacuuming, will it affect the water coming out of the faucet for the homeowner?
Now, one of the reasons we chose it is because it is so gentle. It, you know, it's, the water will continue the flow. It's so gentle that it's really not going to disturb the pipe.
They don't have to shut the water?
No, 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 we don't have to shut it off.
I ask because a couple of weeks ago, there was some contractor in my area did something to a pipe, and I had brown water for about a day.
Yeah, that was probably, there was probably a main break or a service break or something.
So I just wondered if, with all this, you mentioned, you know, unclogging it and vacuuming, if it would affect the flow of water that day?
No, we have not received one complaint from the 2,000-plus that we've done already. So, yeah, that's why we chose this one, because it's very gentle. It has no impact on the homeowner's water quality at the time or after.
And any digging is on the lawn, not on the pave, the road?
Not in the road.
Okay, we don't want that.
Definitely not in the road. Hopefully, it'll all be in the lawn in the right of way. Our goal is to not even step on actual private property.
Right.
The worst scenario will be in a sidewalk, if we have to go, if the curb stop is in the sidewalk. But we have a list of alternative sites, too, so we're going to try go into those before we start going into sidewalks. And our protocol with the sidewalks is, we'll, you know, go into the sidewalk, and we'll cover it in blacktop for a couple of weeks, let it settle, and then our contractor's going back to replace the entire slab.
Okay. And, well, I don't want to, Bill, I have a couple of other questions, but we'll give Bill...
Actually, I've already gotten a letter.
You got, you got our letter?
Maybe at least a week, week and a half.
Oh, I didn't realize you sent out letters already.
You know, that I thought was well-written and kind of explained the process. I read it quickly, and I wasn't, I thought maybe you were actually going to, maybe I misunderstood when I read it quickly, because I knew that you'd contact us and that, you know, I'd hopefully be there the day that you did it. So, yeah, I think you've explained it well, and I knew you were going to drill a hole, but I thought maybe you were going to actually test out the line as well and actually put a small hole in the line, turn the water off, put a small hole in the line, and actually take a look at the line itself. I don't have a sidewalk, which is maybe one of the reasons you chose my house as well. So you actually do not tap into the line at all.
No, we can tell just by looking in the hole, looking at the pipe. You know, we have, you know, a wire brush kind of thing on the end of a pole that we stick in the hole to clean it off. And obviously, the copper, it looks like a penny. We also will use a magnet, we'll lower a magnet down to see if the magnet sticks. Yeah, and in the rare case where, for whatever reason, we can't tell just by looking at it, we'll actually knock on a door and ask permission to go into the basement to look at the pipe coming through the wall. But most of the time...
Which is what I was thinking of, is an alternative, because it is in my garage, and, which is where the water meter is.
Yeah, and we can...
You know, where you could always go into the basement or the garage where the meter is.
Yeah, we've had homeowners where we show up to their house or even call us beforehand and say, I really would rather you not dig, but feel free to come in my basement right now. We're fine with that. If that's what the homeowner prefers, we're fine with that. In other towns where some of our locations are on state roads, we're not digging at all. We're going door-to-door, because the state is requiring a road-opening permit at each location, even though we're not opening the road. So we are doing door-to-door in those areas. But, yeah, if you get a door hanger saying, we are digging at your area, and you'd rather us just come into the garage, just call the number on the door hanger, and we'll do that.
Which would be easier for...
It's easier for everybody, yeah.
So I'd, you know, I'd be more than, so, I mean, that's a, I'm not sure that was in the letter, but if that would be an easier approach for you guys, for the RWA.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some people might just prefer that, because it'd be easier for both parties, so...
Yeah, so for anybody who's listening, if you do get that door hanger, and it's...
Because if it's coming into the meter, it should be the same going into the main.
Yes.
But the water is, I just want to say, your water's, the water, I've lived other places and drank water all over the country, and I think our water's the best, so...
I would agree, and our manager of water quality, you can thank him.
We're drinking some tonight.
There you go.
Val, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to clarify, because I also received a letter. This is the letter. So you may receive the letter, but that does not mean that you will necessarily be digging on my property. So the letter did go to all of the North Haven residents?
It didn't go to all North Haven residents. It went to residents in the general neighborhoods where we're going to do this, because we wanted folks to be aware, when you see these trucks rolling, that that's what we're doing. Only the folks who get door hangers are going to be, are the targets of the vacuum excavation.
You answered that perfectly, thank you.
Yes, that letter is probably the same one I got, so it's not definitive that you'll want to look at my line, it'll...
Right.
The door hanger is the key.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But you can also, even if we, if you don't get a door hanger, you can also go on our website and self-report. So your line's easy, because it's in the garage. You can self-report it to us, or you could even just call us and tell us what you have, and then we'll ask you to send us a picture, because we do have to verify it. But, yeah.
Sally, you have any questions?
Yeah, you said that you had already done 2,000 in the area. What, do you know what percentage of folks just absolutely refused to participate once they got the door hanger?
I don't have an exact percentage, but anecdotally, we have calls every week. It's a very, very low number. More often than not, what happens is, we get out there and we start digging, and there's something in the way that prevents us from actually getting down to the pipe. But very, very few people have absolutely refused to let us dig or go in their house. I think most people have actually been thankful we're doing it, because they want to know.
Right, I would encourage people to cooperate, because it seems to be a good thing for our society, really.
Knowledge is power.
Well, if we look at water as one of the most valuable assets of human life, and we take into consideration what Kevin was talking about earlier, about what happened in Michigan, this is a very important initiative. And when Tom and Kevin met with me, that's why I wanted to bring them, and they actually brought it up to me, you know, what would be the vehicles to communicate this, and we invited them to this Board of Selectmen meeting, so...
Yep, and we appreciate it. Tom and I take this show on the road constantly, so we'll talk to anybody, anytime, about this.
So I think you made a good point, too. I mean, to self-test, if you're not chosen, and you can see your meter and the line coming into the meter, if it's a copper pipe, and a magnet won't adhere to it.
Right.
Plastic's obvious, so...
Plastic's obvious. So the letter...
That's actually a very good, very good point.
Yeah, so the letter we sent out, there's a QR code on there. If you scan it, it will take you to our website that had, we call it the survey, but it's a pictorial, so it kind of tells you, this is how you find your pipe, and then it asks you, does it look like a penny? Yes, okay, you have copper. Well, does it look silver? Okay, well, then, does, when you scratch it, does it come off? Well, then you may have lead. Does a magnet stick to it? Yes or no? It kind of walks you through all the different scenarios to help you identify what it is. And even if you come to the result of, we can't, based on your answers, we can't identify it, but here's a number you can call, and we'll come help.
Come help?
Yeah.
I couldn't do the QR code, because I have a flip phone.
Oh. You can also just go to the RWA website, underwaterquality. It's right, the QR code just brings you to our website.
Just won't read them for me.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Kevin. Tom, thank you for coming also, and thank you for visiting me a couple of months ago to outline this program here, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, okay, Tom?
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, I just would like to take the audience through a couple of slides. And then after these slides, I want to turn it over to Sally, because she wants to mention something also. So I wanted to share with the group here, I've been posting on social media with a lot of positive reactions on some of the things that are happening here in town, and this revolves around several new businesses that I've recently announced. This is an example of what's going to be a 4,000-plus store, right off of Exit 12, across the street from the North Haven Fairgrounds. This is being developed by Tom Hennessy, who I'm working very closely with. He's the owner of Forbes Fuel. This will be a 4,000-plus store that will be serving things like breakfast items, groceries, lunch items. It's essentially a highway rest stop, and there will be gas pumps there also, both regular gas and diesel. We're trying to see if we can fit a Chipotle here also, because they're very interested. We've been talking to them about the possibility of coming here. So this is on the site of what was a vacant parcel of land for years and years. This used to be Parisi Motors. John Parisi, Stanley Parisi, and Mary Parisi and I have been working for years together to try to bring something here. We had a lot of different options, many of them fell through, but this one, as you see, is being built, and I see this being up and running potentially by the end of this year. Number two, this started out as a 15,000-square-foot expansion that Mike Morrow from the BMW dealership and Mercedes dealership was expanding to develop a Sprint van service and a certified pre-owned BMW Mercedes dealership that was separate and distinct from the dealership that you see there today. So I met with Mike a few months ago, and this now is an additional 7,000 square feet over the 15,000-square-foot expansion. So this is a 22,000-square-foot expansion up there on Northern Washington Avenue. This is a good example, ladies and gentlemen, of an existing business that is expanding. We like that, when existing businesses expand in town, and that is very, very important to us. The Hampton Inn, this, I reported on this before. This had stalled because of the fact that during COVID, there were no banks that were funding construction for hotels, and occupancy rates were less than 30% during those years of COVID. We're back now, moving this forward. The owners, Vinay Patel in particular, and I spending a lot of time together, and this thing is up and, not totally up and running, but what's up and running is the construction of it. If you drive by Universal Drive, this is at adjacent to Panera Bread, whom we brought in last year, and Chick-fil-A. This will complete the three-pad site, in addition to having brought in Cinemark here years ago. This has received a tremendous amount of positive publicity on. So I posted this on social media, thousands of people responded. I was there for the soft opening. This restaurant's about 6,000 square feet. It has a balcony area, it seats about 180 people, and the energy level there that night, ladies and gentlemen, when I went there, they asked me to give a speech, which I did, welcomed everybody. This is in that North Haven Shopping Center, where Arnold's Jewelers is and where Savory Liquors is. This is a great addition to our town. So that has been well-received so far. There's been two soft openings. The hard opening will be next week, and menus are being finalized, and it's something new and unique here in North Haven. So based on the success of Jersey Mike's down at Universal Drive, which we brought in about two years ago, filling that space, corporate Jersey Mike's is so happy with North Haven that there'll be another franchise opening up in the one remaining area here. This, five years ago, was an empty parcel of land. So we have the anchor, which is Starbucks, Five Guys has come in, and the Haven Hot Chicken has been a very good success for a lot of different demographics. So Jersey Mike's will be going there, and that'll complete that development there. On Universal Drive, this completes the, just about the total occupancy in this plaza. There is one remaining occupancy in the Target Plaza that we're trying to fill. This is another franchise. We're able to attract this franchise. This is one of the hottest franchises in this venue in the state of Connecticut. There's like five or six locations, they're growing by leaps and bounds. There's other of these franchises across the country, so they'll be going in next to the Jersey Mike's on Universal Drive, which completes the occupancy at that plaza there. The one remaining dilemma that we have is over, down at the Target Shopping Center, there's about 4,400 square feet of open space there. I'm working with the National Real Estate Company to try to fill that, and once we get that done, simultaneously, I'm working on the development of the Washington Avenue area, specifically Stop &amp; Shop That Plaza. That's a long story, that has several complications. Stop &amp; Shop does not make the decision there. There's separate ownership there, we're trying to navigate and have been for years, and I think we're going to see some good things happening there. So these are some of the things that I posted. In addition to this, I have, and I may have mentioned this in the past for those that are watching for the first time, so I've been spending a lot of time with Medtronics. Medtronics is the second-largest corporation in town. They're the second-largest employer. They love working with us in North Haven. I've met many times with their top executives, and they will be investing $1 billion into North Haven's facility over the next five years. There will be a new campus built. This campus will be a site where doctors, orthopedic surgeons, physicians assistants will train on the newest medical devices that Medtronics is producing, specifically things like surgical incision devices, new knee replacement type of concepts, new hip replacement type of concepts. The good thing about this, among many other things, is that we will have a worldwide company whose headquarters are here in North Haven. That's the way this has evolved. And part of this partnership is based on us doing the little things for them down through the years, which they have never forgotten. And I'm going to give you a specific example. In Blizzard's, many times, at 10 o'clock at night, I'll get a call from the plant manager, and they'll say, Mr. Frieda, we have to get our 11:00 shift in. Can you help us plow McDermott Road? Well, I'll take a truck off a residential street temporarily, because at 10:00 or 10:30, everybody's home anyway, we will divert the truck down there, get their 11:00 shift in, and then move that truck back on that residential street to get their staff in there, and they have never forgotten that type of service that we've given them down through the years. So $1 billion over five years is what's happening at Medtronics. And before I turn it over to Sally, I'd just like to say that we are experiencing a lot of momentum now. We had a couple of soft spots last year. The grandlist didn't grow like I thought it would, based on reasons that I've already reported. But we are now developing a lot of momentum. We're getting a lot of notoriety across the state. We're getting a lot of notoriety across the state. I've been working with the State Commissioner of DECD and the Deputy Commissioner specifically on this project because we're looking at long-term revitalizing that whole Monowee section down there. And the next step for me is to find a solution for the Rite Aid down there. And that's getting close. We're getting close on that. We have some dilemmas in that section of town. We have dilapidated plazas that need to be updated. And this is where the DECD and I are trying to collaborate to try to change that. And the last time we were here, I reported, or two times ago, that that finally, after over 20 years, that old gas station that was dilapidated on the corner, that's going to be knocked down. It probably will start next week. And that's going to be rebuilt to a new store, 2,200 square feet. That'll really help Medtronics because they're looking at that type of thing. They want, they like the fact that I'm trying to revitalize the area. And there'll be, I think, four gas pumps there also. But from an optics standpoint, as you come into North Haven, you know, I don't like the fact, never did, but we had that building there that was empty. That'll change at least the optics in that area and put some new taxes on the grant list for us. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Sally.
Okay, well, before I bring up my issue, I just want to say, as far as Medtronics, that $1 billion is very impressive. So, perhaps there will be a tax incentive agreement in the future with that. I don't know. It certainly qualifies for the longest, our longest term, the seven-year. But we'll have to wait and see. And, and yes, that, that gas station, you said it has to be knocked down. It might fall down, so.
Right.
I don't know. They might, just give it a little shove.
That's very true.
It is very true, so.
I was kept in myself to give it a little bit of nudge.
Yeah, just sneeze on it, it might go. Because it's, and it's in such a prominent space at what old North Haveners called the X.
Right.
You know, right, you know, right there. It's just great that it's going to be revitalized. So, that was, that's, those were the two highlights in your presentation for me. So, Amazon better watch out if they want to stay number one with Medtronics coming down the stretch here. I just wanted to mention something I saw in the legal ads. Yes, I read the legal ads and public notices every day. A lot of time on my hands. And saw that, there was a big ad, a big notice regarding North Haven, signed by you regarding a $600,000 federal grant to renovate Martha Culver. And I was really happy to see that. I, I will be honest, I had forgotten about the May 2023 announcement that you and Rosa Delaro presented. After some research that was done, I, you know, was able to recall that. And so, I'm so glad that this is coming about. It's part of a federal community project funding program.
Yes.
And, you know, Martha Culver, of course, was a citizen of North Haven in the 19th century. And she left her prop, her house and property to the town. The Monowee Firehouse is on her property. All those Little League fields back there are on her property. And so, I'm very happy about this, this grant coming in. Over the years, during budget seasons, we've had Martha Culver on our capital, the capital page of our budget. And sometimes it got cut and sometimes it got eliminated from the budget. And I'm sure that my fellow members of the Historical Society weren't always happy about that. But sometimes we had very challenging budget seasons and we had to make those cuts. So, I'm very hopeful that with this $600,000 coming in from this federal program, that that will really help make that facility all that it can be for the town. I'm very excited about it. So, just in case anybody saw this, I just wanted to talk about it. And I think it's a great thing, so.
So, if I could add to that.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yes.
I appreciate it. And that was a good example of what we're trying to do to improve the town. And one of the things that I really wanted to accomplish with this, working with our third congressional Congresswoman, was this at one time was a destination, this facility, where young kids could take field trips in the elementary school. So, one of our goals here, once we get this renovated through the $600,000, is to restore it back, to recreate the history of it, and then work with the elementary schools on school trips to take them into this Martha Culver facility, to give them a history of what North Haven was like back then. All of us here on this board are huge history buffs. We respect the history. Not only history in other areas, whether it be US history, military history, sports history, which I'm sort of a fountain of useless information on as it relates to that, but also the history of North Haven. You know, I'm, I'm involved with a lot of projects, ladies and gentlemen. And one is working with the, the baby boomers who played at Heat &amp; Field here back. That field was 1951 to 1970. There were more men in their 60s here in North Haven that played that. That was a huge part of their lives. So, we not only did the dedication of recreating home plate approximately where it was there at, where the library is now, but now I'm working on a project through fundraising to recreate Heat &amp; Field the way it looked down in the Monowee section. And we've got a group, hundreds of people are involved with this with me, to try to get this moving. So, I think Sally and Billy, you would agree, the history of North Haven is very important.
Yes, and you mentioned elementary school field trips. Well, it must have been either '65 or 1966. I was one of those elementary school students who took a field trip to Martha Culver. And at that time, it was Martha Culver Library. And it was a functioning library in town. And certainly, many Monowee's kids only went to that library for books and did not come to the one in the center of town. So, it, it was certainly an example of, of 19th-century architecture and part of our history, but it was primarily a library for, for many years. In fact, it, it was gifted by will by Martha Culver. I, I once actually saw a copy of her will where she granted the property on the condition that it be used as a library. Now, right now, it's more like a museum.
Right.
But I understand, I took a tour that the Historical Society gave years ago. Had to be 10 or 12 years ago. They had a little bus tour around town. And I took that tour and we, we stopped there. And on the second floor, there was this little shelf that had some old books on it. And I asked, I says, were these Martha's books? And they said, well, we have to have those books there because it's got to be a library.
Yeah, that's very true.
So, that's very interesting. But I'm glad that it's, it's going to be renovated and be multipurpose and be a great destination for field trips for our, our kids here in North Haven. Because I certainly enjoyed the field trip, not only just to get out of school, but it was very interesting.
1965?
Around there, yeah. I would say. I was in Center School, which is now the Rec Center. And, yeah, it was probably third or fourth grade, so that's why I'm estimating.
Under the category, ladies and gentlemen, of useless information, which I tend to be a fountain of. You, us Yankee fans, you're a diehard Yankee fan.
Yeah.
1965 is all that was happening. When you were in Martha Culver, you were on the field trip.
Yeah.
It was the start of the Yankees' demise.
Yeah, oh dear. Well, they've had some good years since, but we don't want to bore everybody. We got to-
Same along the same lines, the first baseball game that I went to. And my aunt, who at that time was my uncle's girlfriend, actually explained the game of baseball to me at Heat &amp; Field. And that was probably 1957.
Wow.
So, she actually, so that was actually the first baseball game I actually saw.
Wow.
Well-
Now, in person.
That, that field was donated by a woman. I forgot her first name, Mrs. Heaton, I'll call her. And Martha Culver donated the land that Little League is on. So, all you kids playing Little League out there, you owe a lot to two older North Haven women. Because we have the land because of them, right?
All right, so-
So, let's move on. So, thank you for allowing me to talk about this matter that I noticed in the paper today.
Before we get to item six.
Yeah.
I also have another announcement on a resignation. I think procedurally, I should ask for a motion to just amend this so I can add another announcement.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add-
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
A resignation?
Motion, second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sally, would you like to take six?
Yes, I'll do six as, as printed. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Marvin G. Wilson, 27 Sentinel Hill Road from the Housing Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll second that motion for Marvin's resignation.
So, Marvin was an outstanding member of this Housing Authority Commission. I've talked to him. And he just recently has a new job in New Britain at Central Connecticut State University. So, it became very difficult for Marvin to attend these meetings. So, Marvin, if you're watching, I know we had the conversation. I thank you very much. Thank you for your service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for amending the agenda. I want to let everyone know that on our police commission, Robin Wilson has resigned. She is in the process now of moving out of town. So, next month, we'll have a candidate to replace her on the police commission. Another very important commission.
Yes, that's an elected-
Yes.
Position, so we have a time limit on that, yes.
That's why I wanted to announce that tonight, so.
Okay.
All right, so there's no-
So, we're not accepting the resignation tonight.
No.
We're just announcing it.
Announcing it, right.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, item seven.
A motion for the, for the acceptance of the property tax refunds is listed.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're at the end.
That's it.
All right, so the next regular meeting of this Board of Selectmen will be Thursday, September 5th at 6:30 here in the upstairs conference room of Memorial Town Hall. So, thank you. And we'd like to now ask if there's any public comment. Mary White.
Mary White, Summer Lane. So, I'd like to start off by, again, thanking the board for allowing public comment. We really appreciate it. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to share information, ask a question, and then make a request. So, first, the information. On the August 5th Planning and Zoning Agenda under Public Hearings is a special permit application for a recreational cannabis retail dispensary business at 104 Washington Avenue. It is called Fine Fetal Dispensary. For a cannabis establishment to operate, it must have zoning approval from local authorities. In North Haven, that is the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are coming in under Retail Commercial Business, CB20, but via a public hearing, special permit application, since they are not just like any other retail business. After all, they want to sell recreational cannabis, a drug that is legal in Connecticut but illegal federally. They are going to be operating seven days a week. 11 hours a day, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Sunday for eight hours, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There will be no cultivation or packaging of cannabis on-site. The products arriving and leaving the facility are packaged. And that will reduce the odor, but not eliminate it. There will be no cannabis products on display. Even though on-premises consumption is strictly prohibited by state law, if somebody wants to eat a cannabis gummy or a cannabis brownie or a cannabis cookie or have a drink with THC, get high via smoking or vaping in their car, nobody is going to come running out of Fine Fetal Dispensary and start yelling and screaming at them and calling the police on them. That would be a guaranteed way to lose customers. Smoking or ingesting cannabis and then driving equals driving impaired under the influence. 104 Washington Avenue is in the center of town, located near businesses less than 735 feet that deal with children as young as toddlers, children in elementary school, children in middle school, and high schoolers. These businesses, a cosmetology, beauty school, daycare, music school, gymnastics cheerleading school, dance studio, these businesses will lose clients when parents take their children elsewhere where there is no recreational cannabis retail dispensary close by. Residential neighborhoods are right behind and near 104 Washington Avenue. This business will negatively impact not only the character of the town of North Haven, but it will directly negatively impact the residents who live near 104 Washington Avenue. Here are the names of streets near or behind 104 Washington Avenue. Franklin, Woodside, Thorpe, Lynette, George, Lincoln, Monroe, Blakesley. If you live on one of these streets or own a house on one of these streets, this will negatively impact your neighborhood, quality of life, and property values. When selling a house, never listed as an amenity, includes a neighborhood recreational cannabis retail dispensary business open seven days a week. There are recreational cannabis retail dispensaries located in New Haven, Branford, and soon to open in Hampton. The Department of Consumer Protection allowed delivery licenses to be available in Connecticut when Connecticut legalized recreational marijuana cannabis on July 1st, 2021. And so, home delivery of recreational cannabis products began since the infrastructure for delivery of medical cannabis was already in place and happening. People can simply order their recreational cannabis products, and they are delivered to their customers' homes, to their front doors. Okay, let's see, what else? And this has been the case for several years. The question, do you want recreational cannabis retail dispensary businesses as part of the economic retail direction in the town of North Haven? Now, the request. Please attend the August 5th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, 7 o'clock, Recreation Center on Linsley Street, Room 1. Ask the commission to vote no on the special permit application for recreational cannabis retail dispensary business at 104 Washington Avenue called Fine Fetal Dispensary. The Planning and Zoning Commission wants to hear from residents. They want to hear from business owners. They want to hear from clients who will take their business elsewhere if the recreational cannabis retail dispensary is approved. Tell the commission you are against this and to vote no. In the event you cannot attend, please email a letter of opposition to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Care of Alan Fredrickson, Land Use Administrator. And his email address is frederickson spelled F-R-E-D-E-R-I-C-K-S-E-N dot alan, A-L-A-N, at town dot north-dash-haven dot C-T dot U-S. Ask Alan to distribute your letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you like, you may request your letter be read during the meeting. In closing, please help protect the character of the town of North Haven. Protect neighborhoods, protect North Haven businesses, and protect the public's health and safety by attending the August 5th Planning and Zoning Meeting at 7 o'clock at the Rec Center in Room 1. And that's this coming Monday. And by, and by voicing your opposition. and by voicing your opposition. As always, call the land use office, 203-239-5321, on Monday, August 5th, before 4:30, and ask, verify, Fine Fetal Dispensary is still on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I got a list, but I'm going to keep the list short.
Can you identify yourself, sir? What's your name?
My name is Roland, R-O-L-A-N-D. Last name is Malboof, M-A-L, B as in boy, O-E-U-F as in Frank, 468 Clintonville Road. Okay. One of the biggest things that I found that I was really taken back by, we got a new 911 charge. If you call 911, it costs you a thousand bucks to get them up there.
I don't really think about it, so I don't know.
You know, before you... And that's one after you fall down and they pick you up.
Who's charging you? Who's charging you?
An ambulance, you mean?
To get the fire department up there. I thought they were paid for and sponsored by the town citizens.
I'm not sure, I have to look into it, so.
All right, anyway. I had... I don't even want to get into the whole story, it's not the place to get into it. And what I will say is, I started with these seizures because of an accident with an automobile. And they did a little bit of brain surgery on me, so we're only half here.
Well, take your time, take your time.
Okay. So anyway, my wife had called 911 because I had a seizure. And I got a bill from an organization out of Pennsylvania that wanted $1,078 because the 911, because the fire department came up to my house. I opened that bill, I almost fell on the floor again. And when you try to talk to these people, they're in Pennsylvania, they're in Pittsburgh, when you try to talk to them, I mean, when I want to tell you they're kind of snooty with you, they are. And I can get right back at that game. The second time they sent... It was like, oh yeah, everything's all right, everything's all right, you got the insurance, there's no big deal. The second bill I got, I called up and I talked to the woman, and the woman was getting obnoxious with me again, and I was getting real short. And I just said, well, look, I'm going to hang up a minute, I'll call you right back. So I called up my insurance provider. Anthem Blue Cross took care of the whole problem. They called me back, they said you shouldn't have another bill from them. What it was, we were paying the company to do billing for us that doesn't even send the bill out to the insurance company. The two things, one, what are we paying the bill for? And the other thing is, why are we paying for something that we already pay taxes to maintain? I thought that was a little bit of a kick in the pants. You know, I went through a lot with my illness. My wife is in the same thing, which is going to get me into something... When I came in, you were talking about water, and I assumed lead. You got the right guy for the job right downstairs. You talked to Elio, he could tell you anything you need to know about water, lead, piping, undergrounds, on top of grounds, wherever it is, I can assure you, he's the man that can...
He's great.
That can tell you.
Yes.
I've known him since he came to this country.
Yep.
And him and his brother both. But anyway, now, my thing is also, on Clintonville School, you did an asbestos abatement.
Well, the Board of Ed did that, yes.
Board of Ed?
Yes.
All right, because I am going to talk to Mr. Stirk about that later in the week. And they had actually a box van sitting on a chair with the door open with a sign above it that said, "Caution, asbestos dust." And I thought that was a little odd, and I don't know if my problem came from the asbestos dust or where it came from, but the back of my property is the school property. And they did two abatements over there with the same style. I can tell you this, years ago, I went to look at how to do hazmat situations, containments, all that kind of thing. The licensing and the classroom got to be so involved, I walked away from it. They didn't dispose of it properly, they didn't... And the only reason I know this, I went for the courses. The courses were through Chemtrick, was the sponsor of the courses. And I'm hoping that's not why I'm sick. I'm hoping that's not why my wife is in the same boat with me. But like I said, I can go on a little bit, but I won't take up that much of your time, and I won't wear out the years of these good people behind me.
I want to... But I'd like you to just stay for a second, because I'm very sympathetic to your story. And I think that we're... Even though this board doesn't govern 911, but we're going to try to help you here, okay? So I think there might be, on the 911 issue, a remedy to try to simplify the process. And if we can get your number, I'm going to call you. Maybe I'll call you tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
Because I'm going to call the fire department to see if we can simplify this so you don't have this problem again, sir.
Well, isn't the question is really, did you take an ambulance?
Well, but...
Ambulance ride to a hospital?
Right, that sounds like you did, right?
Yeah, no, I did.
Yeah, but that's...
But of course, the first responder was the fire department.
Well, North Haven, the fire department's going to get there first, and if it's determined, Nelcon probably transported.
I'm not sure if it was a North Haven ambulance or a Nelcon ambulance.
Nelcon took me to the hospital.
Okay, so that might have triggered this. But we have resources in the fire department that can... That deal, I think, with this third-party billing service. If you can give the information to us, Valerie here, I'm going to call you tomorrow to see if we can somehow solve this problem for you, sir, okay?
All right, like I said, I was just a little bit taken back that here, this is an organization or part of the municipality that we pay for with taxes.
Right.
You know, and here I am, I'm getting the bill. And then, not only did I have to get a bill, I had to get adjudication from a woman out in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, that's not...
And if she can't do the job, or that company can't do the job, then this time, we got a lot of smart people in town.
Right. See, what's happening here, folks, is the town doesn't do the billing, okay? That's where this third party comes in. And it's a third party that I believe a lot of municipalities use. But among the many things I don't like about this story is that this government prides itself on a high level of customer service. Our citizens are our customers. But when we engage these third parties, like you're saying, they don't many times have the same philosophy that we have in dealing with people. So it sounds like you were disrespected, and I'm not happy to hear that, I'm really not, so.
And like I said, it was at a time where I, you know, I just wasn't all there. When I tell you I wasn't all there, I wasn't all there. Took a little bit longer to process, a little bit longer...
Yep.
...to do everything. And, you know, if we talk on the phone tomorrow, if I could bend your ear for another 15 minutes, I would rather in private.
Okay.
I think that's better all for everyone.
You can't... We'll give you the time here, sir, if you like.
No, no, no.
Okay.
But just for everybody that is maybe listening tonight, at least just to... So everybody, if I understood what you said earlier, your insurance from Blue Cross Blue Shield did finally resolve it where it's not an issue anymore. Just as Mike was saying, it didn't happen.
The bill was paid.
It was like, it was just a surprise out of the blue.
But the answer was that, well, you know, most people don't have that kind of insurance.
Yeah, that's not the right answer.
That's not the right answer to segregate out into a group.
Right. And now I thoroughly understand what you're talking about. I think there's a remedy here, I'm going to try to help you.
You know, and like I said, and, you know, like Anthem helped me out quite a bit. And when the gal said she was going to call me back as soon as she got it resolved, she called me right back within 15 minutes, you're all set.
Yep.
And you didn't get any other supplemental bill? Because usually when insurance pays, there's some sort of adjustment on the bill.
I got to go pay.
Yeah, and you don't have to pay that if the, you know...
Well, that's what I got a hold list for, for MEJ to pay, because that's how this all started, and they don't have any insurance to pay.
Right.
I see, yeah.
And now they're putting a hold on any funds I would receive from the woman that hit me, or from their workman's comp.
Oh, this was a bus accident, this was?
Yeah, I got hit in the bus on Quinnipiac, actually in front of Nelcon.
No kidding? Sorry, hear that, yeah.
Yeah.
I was right in front of Nelcon, messed up my knee, I've been out of work over a year. And they just... Yeah, for that fact, right now, I got a letter the other day from MEJ, their attorney, that they put a freeze on any money I would get from workman's comp. And maybe that's why they're the cheapest guy in town, because they don't have insurance.
So after listening to this story, I sympathize with you, I empathize with you, and I'm going to do everything I can to help you with this.
I appreciate it.
So give Valerie your number, I'm going to call you... I'm going to call you at 9:30 tomorrow morning, is that okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, but our town citizens should be aware that if they call 911 and they have an ambulance ride, there will be a charge for that. But insurance will cover it.
Will cover it, right.
In fact, we have a paramedic billing line item in our revenue budget. So how you were treated, to me, is what was wrong.
Well, it was that, but it started, it initiated because somebody didn't get paid.
Yep.
Right.
And like I said, there's a lot of smart people here in North Haven and in the vicinity. Why aren't they doing this?
Right. Well, Nelcon might not have had your insurance card to file the claim with Anthem, and that's why you got the bill and got the nasty phone call from Pennsylvania. But, so that is very unfortunate.
Because Nelcon found my insurance, they had no trouble.
Right.
Everybody had no trouble with the... For that fact, when I talked to the gal at Anthem, oh yeah, everything for that day was paid.
Okay.
Yep. Was this a one-time occurrence, or it happened multiple times?
I had a multiple-time occurrence.
See, that's not right, okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
You know, but the charge was a one-time charge.
I get it, I understand, yep.
And like I said, it was just a little bit... It really caught me off-guard.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, well, a lot of things caught me off-guard, but that was the big one.
So...
I hope you're doing, you're doing better now.
I hope so, I think I am. They're starting now, they're trying to figure out what's going on. They're going to start on my back now.
I see. I give you a lot of credit for coming here tonight, I really do. I thank you, and thanks for outlining this problem. I want to do everything I can to help you.
Well, I've been trying to see you, but, boy, there's a roadblock.
What's the roadblock, what?
And, you know, I'm not, you know, I... I'm not going to stand there at the doorway and scream at you while you're walking to your car. I'm not going to do that. I called, I tried to make an appointment, I thought that's the best way, but the roadblock is thick.
Oh, I don't know. You called my office on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. A lot of times, the staff will say, can you tell us the nature of the problem? Because we've empowered the staff here to try to help the residents. Because a lot of times, you know, I'm all over the place. I'm at a state level, I'm at a regional level, I sit on several boards and commissions, I'm out on economic development. So the staff, what they try to do sometimes, maybe this is where the roadblock came in. A lot of times when residents say, well, I don't want to, I want to tell you what the problem is. But like, the staff is empowered to try to solve the problem on the spot. Now, maybe that's part of what you experienced.
Well, all I'm going to say is, and I'm not, I don't want to blow smoke up anybody's backside. When you first got elected, you were one of the most available people there was on the planet. Need something, you go to your office, you talk to your... Yeah, 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 no, 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 but you made the decision.
Yep. Well, what's happened since then, it's a sad story, and I want the residents here to listen to this carefully. About four years ago, we had threats up here. And in one of the threats, I had to chase the guy out myself, chase him down the stairs. Now, I have two women in my office, so that started the process. Then there was another incident here, where somebody stormed in here, they felt threatened. Then there was a third incident here, where someone came in and threatened to kill the staff. So I came back, and I hope you don't mind me saying this, Val, the staff was in tears. I was at a mayor's meeting. They said, Mike, we don't feel safe here anymore, because their lives were threatened. So I had to do something that I've never really wanted to do. I had to change the open-door policy for their safety. So that's why there's security up here, that's why there's cameras up here. And since then, you know, people have stormed in here. And we had a situation last week where they were terrorized. I had to go to the door, and there's a gentleman that has a lot of problems. So this is why maybe it appears I'm not as available, because we had to put security up here for their safety, and for everybody's safety. But this story here resonates with me, I'm going to try to help you.
I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, and I know that the First Selectmen's staff always does their best to either directly...
I didn't realize you were part of the staff, I would have went to your house.
No, no, she's not part of the staff.
I'm a member of...
I know where you live.
I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen.
That's my best line.
But his staff does a great job in addressing concerns when people phone in. And if they can't, they will generally send the citizen, direct them to the department that might more readily address the issue. Now, we used to have one of the, if I remember correctly, maybe it's different now, after we got the PSA and the fire department, but isn't one of the deputy chiefs kind of overseeing the billing?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to talk to tomorrow.
That's who I would say would be the person most helpful for you to speak to, especially about the way you were treated.
I'm going to convey that to them. And I mean, I may... Well, we'll see how this goes, but we're going to start with the 9:30 call tomorrow, and I'm going to stay with this to try to solve this problem for you, okay?
I appreciate you.
Okay, thanks for coming here.
And you know where I live?
And I know where you live.
Okay, well, about your comment about you don't want to yell at the First Selectmen on the way to his car, I've done it, it works, you could do it.
It works?
See, what happens here is, you know, look...
I'm teasing.
You know, when you take these positions, okay? And I tell the newer ones that come in, you got to understand, even though you may not know what the problem is, you're going to be the focal point. People are going to come to you. They go to the top. And a lot of times, like when you first started this story, I said to you, I'm not aware of this, but as you started to tell the rest of the story, then I understood. It's not something I'm directly involved with, but now I'm going to get directly involved with it.
Well, at times too, my wife says to me lately, I get off the deep end, I get off, I start to wander. I said, well, but I never wandered before.
I think you did a great job explaining this story tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and come back again and see us about any issues?
I will, I guess I'll see you on September 6th.
5th, the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yeah, was it 5 or 6?
Right. Well, it's the 5th.
It's a 5. It's always the first Thursday of the month.
Okay.
Unless the first Thursday is July 4th, then it was...
Well, that's why we write notes.
Yeah, no, it's September 5th.
Okay.
9:30 tomorrow, so I'm going to call you 9:30, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, okay, bye-bye. Any other comments?
Good evening, Nancy Barrett, Cresview Drive. I have three health concerns, and the second one has already been addressed by Mrs. White about the Fine Fetal Dispensing legal notice that was in the local papers about the P&amp;Z Commission meeting. So I also echo her sentiments that that is certainly something that the town needs to weigh in on. I am not a big fan of this coming to our town, even though it is certainly legal. My second health concern is a vape shop that is located on State Street. Again, as someone who works in the healthcare industry, I have to just point out that the CDC has taken a very strong stance about both smoking as well as e-cigarettes. No tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, are considered to be safe. Most e-cigarettes contain nicotine, which is highly addictive, and is a health danger for pregnant people developing fetuses in youth. And the aerosol form of e-cigarettes can also contain harmful and potentially harmful substances. So I have a real concern about that particular organization. I know that we've... I know that we've had one in the past, and it didn't do very well, I think it was over on Washington Avenue. But again, I think that this is a concern. And then my third health concern is that I know we'd all love to be able to put COVID in our rearview mirrors, but I just have to say, I'm hearing about more and more cases of COVID here in our town of North Haven. They're still happening. While they may not be life-threatening cases, they can still produce significant illness and certainly disruption to life. So, and in some cases, even in young people, it can lead to long COVID, which is a really distressing situation. So I just encourage people to please be careful around those with coughs, and certainly during the summer months, we all want to get together during the Fourth of July, and graduation parties, and other events where there's big groups of people. So I just really encourage people to wash hands and really be as careful as possible. So now, in addition to my three health concerns, I have two questions for the board. The first is the new van for the senior center that was included in the bonding package for $2,745,000 that was approved during the town meeting back in September of 2023. I just wondered, what is the status of that particular?
It came in two weeks ago.
Oh, great.
I've been dealing with the seniors, in fact, I was over at Oakfield, I got hugs and kisses, they're so happy that we got it, and the transportation's back on track right now, so.
That's wonderful, I'm so glad to hear that, because I know that there was a problem with, there might be on back order, and it was difficult to locate one, either new or used, so I'm very glad that that has come in, and certainly well-deserved, and I'm sure will be very well utilized here in our town. And the last question that I have is, the presentation that was just given, we didn't have an opportunity, the public, to actually ask questions of the two folks that were here talking about the pipe testing. So I'm just wondering, who actually will be paying for the cost of the individual pipe testing on individual private properties?
They are. The RWA.
So the RWA will be paying for it?
Yeah.
So individual property owners will not have a bill sent to them for that at all?
No.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Because of, probably because of the legislative, you know, the fact that there's legislation, there's a mandate that.
Yeah, the mandate is on them, but you never know, you know, exactly where the cost goes to.
I guess in some respects, maybe it comes back to us as, all as rate payers for, you know.
I hope not, yeah.
For the water, I mean, it might be, you know, small, but it's something that they have to do, and they probably, you know, in terms of the Public Utilities Commission up in Hartford, they approve all the rate increases or not.
Right.
Or disapprove it, as you know, and.
Right. So it's technically an unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure that the individuals who are identified as on that shortlist that he mentioned, that they will not be receiving any bills. Okay. And then just the last point that was raised about the billing, I do know that within, and I'm sure all of you know as well, that within our annual budget, there is a line item for QC, and that is, it's $300,000 each year, so we are paying this outside organization to manage the billing process for our fire department paramedic program to go out to individual homes within our town. So while the cost of the paramedics and all of the equipment that they use is certainly paid for by our taxpayer dollars, this particular outside organization is paid $300,000 each year in order to maintain the billing, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's $300,000, but there's, we pay them to do it, because we don't have the resources.
Right, it wasn't in the budget for, including the first year in which they were employed, it was not in the budget, so, but I do know that in this current year, it is a $300,000 line item, so.
Well, that's something we have to look at, based on this gentleman's story here, so.
Absolutely, and again, you have to differentiate between the cost of our paid firefighters and paramedics showing up versus the private Nelcon providing transportation and as well as paramedics. Okay, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
All right. Yes, Tom White.
Before Mr. White starts, if you don't mind, Mr. White, regarding Mrs. Barrett's comment about COVID, I had a personal experience, because I, you know, I wanted to think we were, you know, in the clear with COVID, but someone I knew had recently come down with COVID, and I had been with the person at a social event, and I, you know, the person did the right thing to contact people. So I went and got, tried to find a COVID test, and I went to one of the local pharmacies where I used to get them, and there wasn't any of the type that I prefer, and I talked to the person, where are all your COVID tests? She said, it's funny, you would ask. We've had quite an influx of people coming in, buying them, in the past six to eight weeks. This was a couple of weeks ago. So I understand, yeah, we all want to put the horror of that pandemic behind us, but based on my own personal experience of having to go to several places before I found the test kit that I wanted, that I'm used to using, I think that there's a lot of merit to continue to be concerned, so. That's all I wanted to say, I kind of experienced it myself. Sorry, Mr. White, to make you stand there, but you're young.
Yeah, right, Tom White, Summer Lane, I just wanted to say, I took that, I also received a letter from RWA, and I took it to the next level and performed the self-test that was shown on the website. It was very simple, they advise you to take a coin and scrape the pipe as it enters your foundation before the meter, and take a small magnet and put it up against the pipe, and if it doesn't stick, it's not lead, you know, galvanized, if it does, it is. And I verified ours was copper, and I actually made the call back to the Regional Water Authority. The representative was pleased that I was able to give the information back, and she recorded it on my account, so they're aware of what I have at my home. So anybody wants to complete that, they can prevent anything from happening any further, really, so.
Thank you, Tom.
Very responsible, thank you.
See, my letter's still on my to-do list. So I read it quickly, and I, you know, I should have gone to the website like you did, so. So I learned a little bit something today, that I'm almost positive we have copper pipe as well, but I think your further explanation is good for anybody listening to the meeting to, if they're not chosen, to do a quick test on their own.
All right, seeing no other public comment?
Yeah, there's, sorry, I just didn't want to, like, cut in front of somebody.
Okay, yep.
Oh, also, that hurt, ow, I've been sitting too long. Alex Johnson, Fallon Drive, I did want to thank Nancy for bringing up COVID, my poor baby niece, she had to go through it, and then it got into the whole house, so really do appreciate reminding folks, and if anyone wants to do a civic duty of dropping off masks near the bus stops, it'd be appreciated, because I had a couple of times where I was not prepared, and the dude was coughing right behind me, and I was like, oh, it's not a fun experience, I promise. You just kind of live like this, and it's the best you can do. Also, I wanted to thank Sally for being excited about the Merry Culver, because that sounds really awesome for the kids, which is going to be kind of my topic for today, but I'm really excited that there is going to be more stuff for the kids in town besides, like, just the rec center and the library. And this is not a critique, this is actually me really happy that there's going to be a lot of development in Monowees, there's going to be more development, I heard, over by the high school and the other places you mentioned, and it's just a plea from a lot of parents that I've talked to, that if we can get some fun things for the kids, there's not that much for them to do that's within bikeable distance or like, safe distance, like, without having to go maybe over the, like, highway bypass there, heading toward State Street. So having something like a laser tag place, or a Chuck E. Cheese, or a trampoline park, or anything like that would be really great, if it's possible to encourage that, because I talked to a lot of people, and they're like, I thought about moving to North Haven, but all there is is shops and restaurants, and there's not stuff for my kids to do. And a lot of people are going down to New Haven to the, like, they have the, what is the shower water pad thing? Thank you, splash pads. They're going down to, like, basketball courts, they're going down to, like, the children's museum and things like that. So if we could bring stuff in, I think that would attract a lot of people that are going to be coming in from, like, the expansion on all the pharmaceutical companies and stuff in New Haven to move here, which would be great. And then finally, if Medtronic was open to it, I think it would be very cool if they ever want to do an expansion after this campus of having almost a STEM Medtronic factory kind of thing for the kids to learn about the engineering of these products, of how to make their own one day. I think that'd be really cool, they talked about that with the trash disposal place that they were hoping was going to be built, and then that didn't, and there was going to be a whole kid compartment and a whole school part to that. So it'd be really cool if Medtronic, like, looked into, like, I know they already do stuff in the school, but actually having a place where the kids can go after school and really invest into, like, a STEM-type project where they're hands-on with things like this, but in a simpler, child-safe way, so. But I am really excited that there's going to be more development, and I'm just asking if we can attract, I know it's not perfect, we can't, we can't like beg, but if we can get more children's thing to do, that would be really, really amazing. Also, I wanted to say that I am excited that there is going to be a cannabis dispensary, I have to go all the way down to, like, New Haven, and I know there's going to be one in Hamden, but for people that take the bus, you have to take a bus from North Haven to New Haven, to take one from New Haven to Hamden, and that's two hours. And for someone like me that has needles phobia, I have to take the strongest THD companies to get that procedure done, so I really hope it does stay, and I just wanted to voice my approval of it.
Thank you.
As far as activities for kids, if someone says, oh, you know, I'm thinking about North Haven, but there's nothing to do, we have a very devoted staff at Park and Rec, that we have hundreds of kids participating, sure, in a lot of athletic events, but I know that athletics isn't for everyone, but they have so many other events that are not, you know, your typical athletic events, so, but I agree, there's always room for more.
Yes.
And there is, I believe, if I remember from that article that I read, there's going to be a community room included.
Yes.
In the Martha Culver renovation, that might be benefit. So I understand your quest for more to do, but we do have a great Park and Rec department, and I know that the folks there are always trying to think of new ways to attract all different age groups, including kids, so I just wanted to put that out there.
If parents are looking for things that, like, if they get a two-hour block during the day, they can just show up, they don't have to sign up, they don't have to check if there's an event, they can just go in and do something.
Yeah.
And then come out, especially like, say, parents want to just kind of drop their kids in a trampoline park, and then just for two hours, because they just need a mental break, just something like that, kind of a deal where it's not so rigidly scheduled, and like, having to come every week.
Right, well, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah.
I agree, there's always room to have more for kids to do, but we do our best here to offer a lot of programs, and trampoline park, I don't know, as an attorney, I see a very heavy insurance premium there, I don't know, but.
You know, I looked into a splash pad years ago, and, but, you know, we looked at putting it in one of the parks, but the neighbors in the parks didn't want it, because it attracts a lot of traffic, and.
Coming from other towns.
So that got shot down, but look, you know, I like to think we have a variety of things to do, but like you said, there's always room for improvement.
Yeah, but don't overlook the many, the wide variety of opportunities for kids and adults at Park and Rec. I'm always impressed when I walk in there and I see this huge wall of flyers of all sorts of stuff, so, but anyway.
I'll tell you, our library gets a lot of credit, there's a great following in the children's library, people come in from other towns on that, they love that children's library.
Yeah, they have a lot of shows, puppet shows, all sorts of stuff, crafts.
Activities. The other thing that we did that seems to be very successful is over in the North Haven Shopping Center, we brought in this video business, where children, kids, small kids, teenagers, adults, and senior citizens can put these video goggles on, is the best way to describe it, and there's educational components to it, you can take a tour to different countries, you can play sports, and it really has attracted a lot of people over there. But, you know, like we just said, we always have to look to see how we can improve here.
Plus, we have Just Tumble.
Oh, Just Tumble.
That was the one I forgot to mention, because it was amazing that.
Just Tumble, Jason, who we worked with to bring him in, I mentioned this a year ago here, 11,000 square feet, I've been there many times, and the kids love it, Just Tumble, in the Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center.
Kids Rock Place, there's a music place, are they open?
Yes, so let me explain that, School of Rock, so we opened that up last year, I went, gave a speech, we had the press there, and, because I really believe the arts are very important for kids, there's more kids going there now with the arts, studying how to do guitar, whether it's a piano, whatever it may be. So that's been a big success, yes.
Yeah, so, we're not just, yes, we have a lot of restaurants, but we, there's places, you just have to look, and as it's often been said, our library is a hidden gem, and hidden gems have to be found and utilized, so, but your words are well-taken, we could always improve, so.
Always improve, that's for sure.
Yes.
All right, seeing no other comments, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There is a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much for joining us, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll see you in September.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.